No, there were, I don't know if you got an email. I think it probably all got an email, but it's the chairman's choice.
Mr. Milholland.
Okay, yes, yes. It's the chairman's choice, and your request as it came into me was to discuss the public health appointment and to discuss wind, which were on last week's agenda. And so we have a public comment period. We're not going backwards. We made a decision. We voted not to hold a public meeting at this time until we get a project on the wind issue. And we had an appointment, we voted, we filled the position. And your request simply say you want to talk about those two things which had already happened.
And I would, I would say, basically what I was wanting to do is it wasn't about the appointment of a person. My, I have some suggestions, I guess, going forward from that.
Okay.
About the medical board, which is why I'm asking for the reconsideration. Also with windmills, once again, new information or just thoughts of mine, not about, you know, whether it's right, wrong, indifferent for windmills. And basically, all I'm asking for is a little bit of extra time just to cover my thoughts and try to bring a little perspective to supervisors.
We have five minutes this morning, Mr. Milholland.
Okay. This point. Well, to start my public comment, I guess, amazingly enough, the one that way that I did have for the supervisors is addressing the agenda that today, discontinuing Zoom meetings. I wanted to thank you all for having Zoom meetings because for certain people like myself that aren't super technologically advanced and have trouble with running Zoom, I think it gives a good air of transparency for everybody out here. There's also a lot of people, as you know, that can't attend meetings because they're working during the day or whatever, which I know has been addressed with timing. And, you know, I guess my question now, after seeing the agenda today, is why it would be taken down? I know you've all talked about bandwidth issues and everything. I guess, in my mind, that I find it somewhat hard to understand how a county courthouse could have bandwidth issues and everything. And also, at the end of the day, Mr. Holmes is offered to do it at his own home, on his own time. And, you know, it gives people like me that want the transparency for the meetings to be able to see what's going on. And I guess it kind of brings me to a question to, to the board, why exactly you would want so desperately to remove Zoom meetings? I know that you guys stated that, you know, you didn't want to discontinue Zoom meetings, that it would be brought back as soon as possible. And I guess, you know, there's some problem in my mind there of, you know, when would they be recontinued? You know, under what circumstances are they being removed? And what would need to be met to put them back up? You know, like I said, transparency wise, I think it's important that all people, as you've said, you know, with windmills and everything else being a hot button issue, literally just, you know, dividing families or anything else, you know, nobody, people won't sit next to each other in church for, because of that. I know a couple of people that have actually brought that to my attention, which is why I state that. It's almost started a civil war in the county. And I, you know, bothers me that people can't, you know, agree to disagree or whatever. But I would ask you, Mr. Morris, I guess, why, why, you know, in, in this discussion today, you're talking about going ahead and removing Zoom meetings? And if you could give a little context to that? And also explain to us, you know, a little bit more of why you're seeking to discontinue that? Either, you know, I think it's important to have video, not just the audio meetings, just so people can make an informed decision, see who's there. If you're not aware of who a person is, you can actually put a face to the name, to the comments, and thereby go ahead and, you know, give a lot more transparency and context, which I believe is important. And I hope you understand why the transparency of everything that the county board supervisors does affects everyone here in the county and in the state. And I'll go ahead and close. The eye of the wolf basically states, our liberties we prize, our rights we will maintain. And I think that's pretty important to remember in everything that supervisors do and, you know, for people in general, if they have a concern, please come forward, please speak. And, you know, I'm disappointed that you didn't reconsider my being put on the agenda so I could address these other things. I mean, I, I think I have new things that nobody said before following all meetings on YouTube and everything else. So while that's disappointing, would you consider replacing me on the agenda for next week?
Well, if you have new information, can you send it so we can review it to see if it isn't heat new or if we've dealt with it over the last two years?
Is there a reason I couldn't handle that today while I'm here?
Well.
Are you just not willing, are you not willing to answer what the citizen has to say?
Well, I want to hear what the citizen has to say, of course. One of the downfalls of putting public comment to the front is that we've got an agenda with people traveling from St. Joseph here today.
Right.
And if we take a lot of, I mean, it's the give and the take. We, having it at the end, we sometimes sit until we get to a time, and now we're a little bit, we're in a test mode as far as how will this work on the front end? So to get into a long discussion right now, no, it, it's not probably fair.
Would you be willing to offer me 10 minutes? And would you be willing to let someone in the, in the audience here go ahead and yield me five minutes if there are a couple of comments? Would there be anything against that?
Well, what, what, can you summarize quickly what your point is on the wind?
Sure.
And summarize, give us, give us a bullet point.
Again, I'll take as short a time as that will be possible, and I thank you for allowing me to speak on this. As far as the medical board goes, I believe that when you're talking about, as we know with coronavirus, mask mandates and other things, as things have progressed in the world today, that it brings a lot more need possibly for the certification of people that would be on the board of public health to be prudential in some way, shape, or form to the medical profession, because that way you're protecting people that would have to abide by, say, a mask mandate or believe in what's going on. And I think that would add a lot of credence to if a doctor or someone else is on the board, which I realize we already have one.
We have two.
Oh, two. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But having people on the board that are medically prudential, and that's not saying anything bad about your last pick last week, I realize from what you told me, that is done, it's over. But going forward, I kind of believe that there needs to be some progression. And you had stated in the last meeting that in the, the public board of health was basically started in the late 1800s. And part of the progressive things that have happened since then was in 1868, someone like Vernon Baker, metal bar owner from our county, would have been allowed to finally vote as a black. 1919, women were finally allowed to vote. And I feel that just saying something, this is the way it's been, this is the way it's always been, so this is the way we're going to keep doing it, doesn't give much of a foresight thought to how things are going. And it's just a concern of mine.
Okay.
And if you'd allow me to go ahead and continue on.
Well, let's get about two more minutes, and then we're gonna have a new.
Okay, let's go to the wind, Jim. Really quickly on the windmills, part of the new thing that I would have to bring to your attention would be possi, the possibility of during negotiations with the wind company. I mean, I kind of believe in my own heart that you guys, Boris, made a decision on that.
I'm gonna stop you right there. I'm gonna stop you right there. That's not a fact.
Okay.
We have had no negotiations with any wind company. Wind companies are talking independently with landowners in Page County and other areas.
Okay.
We have, we're aware that they're here, we have no deals cut. I mean, all this bunky talk about us promoting wind, we are allowing landowners to make that decision, whether they wish to participate or don't wish to participate.
That's correct.
And until we get a project, until we get a project, then we, we really, there's, there's no negotiating until we see where the project is and how we do a land or road use agreement.
And I apologize if my feeling personally is not what's going on. I thank you for your context, telling me that that's what's happening.
I'd like to interject one little thing. We do have an over hour long put on by the county meeting on our website that is pro wind, the people that make money by wind. I'm not saying you are making money off of that. I'm saying, I would say we have, we have, gonna let the salesmen on the county website.
Okay.
In a way, go ahead.
And I guess, just to, just to my thought, I'm sorry for agitating you about that.
No, you didn't. I just, I just want to get the facts straight. We, we have no deals. People say that we're taking money under the table, people say we're in cahoots with this one or that one, it's all bunk.
Not what I was saying.
Yeah, I didn't think you were, but, but you, you're talking about we've negotiated, you've made the comment that we've already talked with the wind companies. I mean, you had simulated that we're orchestrating some wind development. We are not.
Well, and, and here's my thought is, is that if the wind turbines would happen to be brought into Page County, I, I feel very strongly that they should be taxed at the corporate tax for all.
That's beyond our control. The state dictates what the, what the tax abatements are, and it's a seven year schedule. We can't do that.
I actually asked, asked something else, I forgot about, Jason, about that. And there, there are two choices. They're taxed at the special rate of zero percent first year after 30% of the year, or it applies the same as other commercial real estate.
Okay.
So there's two choices.
When we, when we get to the point where we have a project, we will look at that.
And I guess, in that, it's the exact same thought, real quickly. You know, if you guys are using the money that windmills would produce for the county, just a thought, I guess, in my own mind is, if you guys could consider the use of the tax money for lessening the property taxes, which we all know are going up in the county during the reevaluations, and also the possibility of possibly quickly talking to Mid-American about going ahead and doing something similar to what other places have done with wind, which is lessen the power bill for all residents of Page County, as the power is actually, my understanding, most likely going to be going somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Milholland.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any other public comments, either electronically or in the room?
Hey, this is Heidi with the Valley News. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
I would like to comment on the agenda item to discuss discontinuing the Zoom meetings. I know Zoom came about because of the COVID-19 pandemic, but it has become a valuable resource for the newspaper as we operate with a small staff. And it would be difficult for myself or other newspaper staff to attend the supervisor meetings in person on Tuesdays, as it is a production and press day for both of our publications. And I just hope, I just wanted to hope that you would consider continuing to offer Zoom as a way to attend the weekly meetings.
Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
This is Judy Clark, and I'd like to comment.
Okay.
Okay, I've got six points. First of all, you spent all the money on the equipment to do the Zoom meeting, meetings, and it's been a valuable resource to everyone. Secondly, Chuck and Alan are still sort of wearing masks, so we evidently need Zoom. Third, it really helps people who can't be there to keep up with what's going on. Fourth, it's gotten people involved, and it's gotten people used to it. You stopped the video, and now you want to take it all away, which doesn't seem fair to the taxpayers. Fifth, Cory doesn't have to be there, you should be able to handle it. And sixth, it actually gives the appearance of trying to hide something that you don't want people to know what's going on, and that you evidently don't want people to question or disagree with you. Now, you may disagree with what I'm saying, but I still think it's very important that we continue with the Zoom meetings so that people who are not, like Heidi said, who can't be there, have the advantage of knowing what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Chuck, Margaret Staldorf.
Yes, Margaret.
I agree with the other speakers that Zoom is vital, it's important, and I would hope that the supervisors, even across county lines, would continue using the Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
This is Judy Kennedy.
Yes, Judy.
And I, I just want to agree with what everybody else has said about the Zoom meetings. I had surgery and I couldn't come, and it, they've been a real, a real good thing for me, and I'm sure others feel the same way, and that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Jane?
I'm Jane Stimson, and I want to speak that, that I would like you to vote to keep the Zoom meetings going. Jacob's done work to make the video happen without bothering anybody else. And so I, I would like to encourage you to vote that we keep Zoom. The reason you did Zoom originally was COVID, is that right?
Yeah, we didn't know what Zoom was till COVID came.
Yeah. So are you saying that the COVID issue is gone?
No, I, I don't think COVID issue is gone. We'll have this discussion. It's on our agenda today, it's a suggestion of all of our board members to discuss it.
Okay. So the Zoom just keeps you from being able to edit the report of what happened? And it gets more people involved? And I, I'm pretty sure as supervisors, you don't mind people in the county being involved. I mean, it's, it's kind of easy when nobody's involved, easier, but it's, it's admirable when people get involved in county politics. I don't know about the lawn usage. I know at one time, this is this next subject, I believe you voted to not have meetings on the courthouse lawn, was that group meetings?
We, we have, and I'd have to go back to the record to where that was, back last fall, but we have, and we had this discussion, there are people in the audience that will disagree, but to my recollection, we've never had a political rally. We've had Bible readings, we've had Black Lives Matter, which is arguably maybe a political movement. We've had, we have a request today for a concert, Glenn Miller days of youth concerts. But in all the years as a reporter that I covered political candidates, when they would come stump, they would either show up at the Garrison House, the Leeds Center, the ICE House, they never, to my recollection, and at that time, at that discussion occurred, John Hurstverber was on our board and that served for 16 years, and he didn't recall any political stumping by candidates. And this came about when we were asked to, after, on Thursday, we were asked to consider a Trump rally on the courthouse lawn on that, on that Saturday, two days later. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's a history of.
Is there, is a, is a county square a part of government? And is government's political? I don't know why you would say nothing political can happen on, on the county square.
Well, there's some, there's some legal considerations about what you want, and once you allow one political party, now, we have a history in this room, which maybe won't happen for the Republican and Democratic county coffees, because this room's been repurposed for the board supervisors. We have a lot of tables in here, and it may not suit for the county convention. I'll have to have that discussion. But those have been traditionally held at the courthouse. Four years ago, I believe, one of the parties did a poor job of keeping the courthouse clean, tracked mud all over, created quite a, quite a stir. And, you know, whether we can repurpose this space again or not, the board will, will look at that.
Yeah, I would really encourage you to make it, make this building and this square, this lawn available to county taxpayers. I think.
Well, I think we do. I think we do. We just, the party affiliations, we've tried to stay away from. We've denied Democratic candidates, we've, we've denied Republican candidates use of the courthouse lawn.
And so both of those things kind of go towards freedom of speech. And on the national level, we see a lot of censorship happening in the government, in the social media, and in the mainstream media. There's just a lot of censorship happening, and I don't want to see that at county level.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Chuck, this is Jess. Can I make a comment?
Yes, Jess, go ahead.
Jess with Page County Public Health. I do want to comment on people voicing their opinions about Lori being on the board. I would like everybody to do some research and find out what Board of Health does, what the Public Health Department does. Lori is the perfect fit for this. We do so much more than just medical stuff. We already have two doctors on our board. We have the CEO of Carranda Hospital and another person in the medical profession. But we do environmental health, we do tobacco cessation, we do maternal child health, we do grant writing. There's so much that we do outside of the realm of the traditional health field that I just really want people to do some research prior to making comments about who should and shouldn't be on our board. And to me, it's a little alarming that nobody has seemed to care prior to now who's been on the Board of Health. And I would like to know, does this, is, does this have something to do with the wind turbines?
Yes, thanks for your comment. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, then we're gonna go to J D. J D, please come forward.
This is Ashley Yerkowski. Can you hear me?
Ashley, Megan.
Got five minutes.
Yes.
Can you hear? Okay. I had problems unmuting myself. I'm sorry, it takes a couple of seconds. A, I really hope you consider voting for keeping the Zoom. I think that it's a very good service for our county. It's gotten a lot of people involved in what's going on in our county. And I would say for a supervisor to vote that down, it would be a very dishonest thing, and you wouldn't want the public to see what's going on in our county as if you're trying to cover stuff up or something. I just think it's another way of being transparent to the county and the people in the county to let them know what's going on. Also, I would like to comment on, this is, oh, probably the third time, I know it's even happened to my family, that people wanting to get on the agenda to speak, and they've been denied. Once again, I'd just like to point out that you guys do work for the citizens of the county and the public, and I hope that you would be open to let anybody come in there and speak for their family and listen to their opinion. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that ends our public comment. J D, if you could come forward, please.
Good morning, I'm J D. It's a fine day in Page County.
Good morning.
And I made that observation to a gentleman who was walking beside me, or, you know, on the other side of the street on my way here, and he said, yeah, I hope they fix the boughs. So I don't know who was the best, or he just, a good day to fix boughs. I sent out the engineer's update a little bit later last evening than normal, but here it is. We're hauling rock, they're bladed, we're cleaning up on brush clearing projects on G Avenue, they're doing some spot, spot work along, along Stanton Road with, with saws and brush moors on skid steers. We'll be piling brush, they're piling brush that was partially burned, you know, over the times, and, and putting that into larger, larger piles. We're gonna be, the shear is down, broke a cylinder of gathering, gathering arms, so we'll be taking that attachment off and switching over to pipe work. They were doing some pipes associated with driveways on projects yesterday, both at the F 20 Bridge and the weird number 10 up on 130th Street. Those, those driveways were enhanced for the landowners, for their respective landlords as a part of the right of way negotiations back when we were acquiring land rights for those projects. The shop's been pulling the snow equipment off, off the trucks and motor grinders, wings, sanders. We do have, we have two trucks that remain suited up for winter operations should the snow occur late this year. Still waiting on some more, more parts. I talked about the cylinder, the shear. And we're getting ready to, to bring the spray, the spray patcher into operation. We have, we have a bin that we use chips, we pile chips in during the summer, but it's used for salt storage in the winter. We need to clean the salt out of that, and go down to Savannah and pick up some chips, the best chips we've found in the area, although it's a bit outside the area perhaps. But we're still not ready to do spray patching operations yet. It's a little bit cold overnight, and, and the weather certainly affects our operations there, particularly with the road. On the construction and engineering side, our focus this week is the F 20 Bridge on J 20 east of Essex. Set beams a couple of weeks ago, of course, and had some good, good coverage on that. This Friday, we have scheduled the deck placement, still on as of, as of today, there will be a pre-fore conference tomorrow at the bridge site, find out, you know, where the concrete's coming from. I hope it's coming from Shandaua, that's the closest spot. Other concrete for that job came out of Lorinda. This is early, and Lorinda has hot water, and Shandaua quite does not. We're continuing project development on a hot mixed resourcing project on Stan Road that has federal money involved included in that job. There's a local rock haul contract taking bids on Thursday, the 8th, and then pipe installation work by contractors, letting is scheduled on 15th, Thursday following that. Next, next board supervisor meeting next week in the evening will be presenting our DOT budget program, five year construction program. Only small changes to that, and the majority of that has stayed the same. There's a meeting in Ames I'd like to attend on Wednesday, tomorrow. And there was a, there's an executive board meeting for county engineers on Friday, however, I'll be, I'll be at the bridge deck, so I'm tied up for that, so it's. I would comment that I prefer to have a public comment toward the end of the project, for the end of the meeting as opposed to any meeting. That's just my personal schedule, and I do find utility in Zoom. Okay, questions for me?
Any questions? Did, did you see that comment about E Avenue? Yes. And will that, will that be in part of the discussion next Tuesday evening?
It'll be.
It'll be part of the discussion. That, that project is not on the five-year law. I'm not going to propose that addition to the five-year plan, but, but we'll certainly discuss things like that.
Okay, okay. So will you, uh, will you respond to Mr. Seaman then?
I can do that, yes.
Okay, that'd be great. And then?
I have one, one more, one more comment. And this is a financial. If you've been tracking the, the expenditures from the road department, right now we're over budget. Of course, we haven't amended the budget yet. And when we amend the budget, that'll be taken care of. Road use tax money, this year to date, we have one quarter left. In other words, we've got Marches in, which were in April, the last quarter. Road use tax revenues to date is two million eight hundred and three thousand seven hundred dollars. Today, last year fiscal year 2020, at the same time, we were at two million nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-eight. So we're slightly down compared to where we were last year. But then the previous year, twenty, twenty nineteen, fiscal year 2019, we had two million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars. So, you know, ninety thousand dollars behind a couple of years ago out of, you know, two point eight million. I, I, I do not anticipate showing a short or having a shortfall in the road use tax revenue spend for the year once the rest of the year is, I guess, deposited. But we are keeping track.
Would you mind sending those numbers electronically? I didn't make sure.
Sure.
Okay. My shorthand's not that good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, J D. All right, next on our agenda, we had a request from Scott Davison to use courthouse lawn for a high road concert as part of the Cowboy Church on Sunday, June thirteenth from four thirty to nine P M. And I, when Scott inquired, I sent him the, the application with chief attorney. It looks to be in order, so I didn't pay the motion.
I'll make a motion, Lee. Except I don't do that.
I'll second that. Okay, motion by Holmes, second by Armstrong. Any other discussion? He has asked for the restrooms. That's the one issue that with COVID that we kind of shut down the restrooms.
This is in June, right?
But in June, I'm, I'm okay with the restrooms. Are you?
I talked to him. His concern is it'd be so far for older people if they have to go. Where would they even go? There might be, so I think it's all right.
I think, you know, June thirteenth, we're sixty days away. We're vaccinating. In fact, before she gets away, I'd like to have Jess put in a plug for the vaccinations, the open vaccinations this weekend for people that maybe haven't heard yet. But anyway, the request was inclusive of having bathrooms. They said they would, you know, he offered to replace the supply to other paper things. And I said, don't worry about that. So is the motion okay?
Yep.
Okay, motion and any other discussion? Hearing none, then let's vote all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to. All right, I'll let Scott know. Okay, we're a little bit behind, but we have a group of young, young folks here today that we will welcome. You'll come up to the microphone. And there is a handheld mic here too, guys. And if you could maybe split two on the podium mic and two on this handheld, and you'll have to probably power it up. And I've got this PowerPoint here. Were you guys wanting to go through this PowerPoint? Or was that just for our identification?
I think if you have a similar.
Yeah, okay, great, great. Awesome. So could you, could ever, could somebody, if everybody likes to step up and tell us who you are and introduce yourself, that'd be great. We'll start there.
I'm Matt Barnes. I've been a Page County resident for five years, and I've been a member of the museum and Dr. Gray's for the state.
Thank you, Matt.
I'm Micah Grossman. I live by the Bethesda area. Yeah, I've been volunteering with the museum for two years now.
Thank you, Micah.
I am Chase McAndrew, and I've been volunteering with the museum for eight years. And I co-founded Dr. Gray's just over six years.
Thank you, Chase.
And I'm Tatum Watson. I've been in Page County my whole life, and I've volunteered with NBHM and the Dr. Gray's for. I don't even know how long at this point, but probably five or six years now.
If you'd be kind enough to repeat your name, these old old videos.
Oh, yeah, Tatum Watson.
Pardon?
Tatum Watson.
Okay, thank you, Tatum. All right, so, uh, Micah, you sent over a list of things that you guys are interested in having. Can you, uh, I guess the question that I have, I talk with Gary McLaren, our city manager. And when you and I talked, Micah, you said that it was, a lot of the work you're wishing to do is here in the city, correct? And the townships typically fund improvements in our cemeteries, but that's not the case in Clorinda. The city cemetery is maintained totally by the city. So we don't have any funding source from a township here. My question is, when I talked with Gary, he said, he thought approximately six months ago that they made a donation for out here with gravel and concrete. And he said it to the tune of about five hundred dollars. Has that all been consumed at this point?
I'll answer that one.
Sure.
On the first line with the Arndt Cemetery, it's true, we have the north Arndt Cemetery, but we also work in all county cemeteries. Last year, we were at Paul's man Davis, and this year, I think our focus is mainly Hollyville.
Okay.
And with the tune of the city, they did donate some gravel. I think it was maybe a yard. And we used just about all of that up. And the other donations were, I think it was a bag of mortar and some of the D two, the cleaning solution we used. And the mortar we're still using and the D two is just about all used up.
About all used up, okay. Any questions in this group? Any one of you guys?
Uh, is this something that the sales tax money can go towards or not? That's just a question that's popped in my head, a little few hundred dollars or something, portion of that.
Well, I think that, yes, I think sales tax, local option sales tax for community betterment.
I don't know.
Could be potentially used. I guess the.
Reaching out to township trustees would be a good idea, too, because township I'm part of actually has been, has been setting aside some money for working on tombstones. I just, I think that might be another avenue, too. They might be tickled to have somebody out there working on it.
Well, and Trish, you've got, if you would, come to the microphone, please. Trish Burtman is going to join us. There's a handheld there.
I just wanted to make one comment, and I'm going to take my seat because these giddos are in charge of what they're doing here this morning. But the supplies that were provided by the city are kept separately. Just that we apply for the city cemetery.
Gotcha, okay.
We even have a location out of the cemetery that we keep the supplies for. Yeah, the D two, we've been working, see, we started Hollyville in twenty, twenty seventeen. We've done Vice Cemetery, Davis Cemetery. We're getting ready for Butler. We've done Toddly, some work out at Rose Hill. But those, those supplies that were used were actually paid for by the county museum.
Oh.
And also by private donations.
Great.
So none of the city, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
None of the city's supplies have been used at the county cemetery at all. We actually have been for a very matter.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you for the clarification. So, um, you know, the, the one thought that I had, and I don't know if, you know, our county employees are, we have about eighty people on staff. And I think our county employees are proud to be employees of the county, and I think they're proud of living in Page County. And I, I can't help but wonder if our first step before we even go to the township is if this board would maybe advocate for a county project among our employees and see what kind of donations we could get. And, you know, because I didn't price the rock, and I don't know what, you guys probably have a better estimate of what that rock would have cost.
Any estimate?
Uh, we don't really have the estimate for them. I would like to find out the list we gave, a sort of hypothetical estimate, estimate. Really, each stone we repair is different. So from year to year, we have a fluctuation in the amount. So it's really just whatever amount, the kind of thing's fair, is fair.
Right.
Do you know how much we have to pay the cost of a stone now? What you have to down to?
So for a typical foot by six inch headstone, just the run of the mouth is around ten dollars.
Ten bucks, okay, okay. You know, you, you and your crew, you, you only refer, you're four, but your band is bigger, your band of brothers is much bigger. And you young people are just amazing with what you've done with regard to not only volunteering all your time, but the passion you have at preserving that part of history. You know, most, most young people your age don't give two hoots to holler about that. And what a, what a joy to see you guys in operation.
I have a respect. Respect.
Yeah, I have some thirty, and for now, I think thirty-eight people.
Thirty-eight people, wow.
Hang on, we're saying, or we're working because they work from ten to forty. So and that means from kindergarten, we had six children. So it's been a really good part of my career.
That's awesome. Well, um, let's, let's put together a letter, a plan to the employees first, see where that goes. And then Jacob, what do you think about being on a township? Is that something that we want to even pursue, a letter to the different clerks?
I think they would, I think they would fund some of this. I do.
Yeah.
Because they're, we hired an outside group to come in. Trustees did a few years ago, and it was pretty expensive to fix the stones.
Yeah.
It might be. A lot more reasonable because they're willing to donate their time and effort, labor.
Yeah. Well, not, not every township has a cemetery.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe, maybe even just the contact for, you know, trustee on each one, they can call them.
I wonder if, like, your township, there's a little, there's a little set aside in all of them where there are some that are supposed to be for maintenance.
Yeah, there are a little, a little tree falling down and working on stones.
Uh, I would like to mention, uh, tombstones are different from, uh, modern structures with, uh, Yap used, uh, special products for some aspects, like the mortar, which is a hundred dollars. And actually, we've partnered with another cemetery in Missouri. The county has to fund, uh, the mortar, which is a hundred dollars.
Really?
A piece. So I wonder if that would be too large of an expense for a specific township if they band together.
Sure.
And through this, we've also learned that every township is different. Excuse me, sorry. Through this, we've learned that every township is different and that some, they are great at taking care of their cemeteries and that the people of the township band together and help us when we're out there. Others barely even know about some of the cemeteries that are within their township. I mean, we've also discovered cemeteries have six tombstones that are just in the middle of a cornfield. And that's a little more complicated and that people don't know about it. But we still want to try to at least restore it or at least make sure that people know about it. So within the township, yes, we can rely on them a little bit. But as I said, every township is different. So it becomes a little complicated at that point.
Sure. Well, again, I think you, your efforts are very amazing. And I feel pretty confident that we can, we can find some way to chip in and help, whether it be a partnership with our local option sales tax dollars or simply our, our employees. I, I think our employees would like the opportunity to, you know, put into a fund that we could present to you at some future time. Uh, the weather's turning. You're probably wanting to get out there and start digging around in the dirt. Have you? Well, uh, any other questions? Is there anything else you guys wanted to ask or say to us about your group or?
Um, so in twenty seventeen, we were also able to, uh, attend the Preserve Iowa Summit um, with, with this cemetery conservator, Jonathan Appel. And he is the leading authority on cemetery conservation and preservation in the world at the moment. Um, so going through that training and learning what products and what materials we need to use when repairing stones, um, that's what we base all of our work on so far. Uh, and through his company, we're able to get discounts and different things like that. So that was a great learning experience and learning how to properly and properly restore stones. So it's there long after work on it. It really, it was really an amazing experience.
Awesome, awesome. Well, thank you so much for your time. Uh, I know how to get ahold of her. I know I've got your phone number, too, Micah. We're, we're going to distribute a letter and see if we can't get our employees to kick in. And we'll, we'll put a deadline on. We'll get our heads together. See if we can have something here by the end of April that we could present to you, okay?
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much. If you have time to present to that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, can I get a volunteer to want to draft the employee letter? One of you guys want to do that today? You want me to?
I can, if you want. You're, you're good at writing letters. Doesn't matter. We can just, you want to do it?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. Okay, uh, we are running behind nine o'clock on the agenda. Discuss and approve discontinuing Zoom meetings. Okay, for just, I was just going to say, I, I brought up the question at some point in time. I've been reading about some other counties that are, are quitting. And I said, do we need to discuss it and see where we want to go? Uh, after putting it on the agenda, I knew that that would create some interest or disinterest. And I got a few calls from, uh, fellow employees within the county, and I understood their, their reasoning, and I heard some more good comments today. At this time, I, um, I think we need to look at possibly the ceiling issues and putting in the boards or the, the panels, look at that project a little bit more seriously. But, um, at this point in time, I would like to continue the Zoom meetings. Um, and as long as we've got people online and, and able to attend that way, I think we should. I agree. Okay, I think we're all in agreement. I do, I do want to say that, uh, pre-COVID, we really didn't know what Zoom was.
Right, I didn't know what it was.
And it's been a wonderful tool, can still, I think, be a wonderful tool moving forward. And two, I think Judy Clark's point about the mask. I think that while we have people in here who are, are unmasked, I think we have, uh, we, we do have a need to be vigilant yet. If you talk to public health and hospitals, uh, the variants are out there. People are concerned till we get more, more vaccines. Speaking of vaccines, uh, so before we go there, uh, do I hear a motion to discontinue Zoom meetings? All right, hearing none, uh, it dies for a lack of a motion. Jess Erdman, our public health director, is on the line. I, I did want to give you an opportunity, Jess, you're not on the agenda, but there's some exciting news about vaccines coming into Page County. What, what can you tell us about the free, uh, the Johnson and Johnson product that will be, uh, used on Saturday?
Yeah, so we are getting the Johnson and Johnson. This is the first time that the Public Health Office will be getting the Johnson and Johnson. And as of right now, now I don't know if we'll get it again. Um, this was just a kind of a one-time thing. We are getting nine hundred doses, and we are offering that at two clinics this Saturday to tenth. The first one is in Clorinda at the Lead Center, and we are vaccinating from ten to three. And then the other one is at Nishna Valley Church on Highway fifty-nine in Shenandoah. And that one is also from ten to three. We do encourage people to, um, schedule an appointment, and they can do that by calling, uh, seven one two eight five zero one five zero nine. Um, and this J and J vaccine is the one and done, so you only have to come once. We're, we're, we're really excited about the opportunity to be able to do this. And the state has opened it up, so anybody over the age of eighteen can get this J and J vaccine. And you do not need to be a Page County resident. Anybody can come in and get it as long as they, uh, schedule an appointment.
All right, so I, I'm sure the phone's been ringing off the hook. Uh, you still have availability, though, correct?
We do.
Okay, excellent. Seven one two eight five zero one five zero nine. You need to have. You need to have the reservation. We'd be glad to vaccinate you and get you on the list, but don't just show up, uh, on Saturday unannounced because, uh, the likelihood of you being able to be taken care of is slim to none. Okay, well, thanks, Jess, appreciate it. Okay, nine fifteen, we've caught up to nine twenty-one, our nine fifteen guests, I don't think are here yet from, they're traveling from St. Joseph, Missouri. So we'll take a few minutes to go through claims.
Long time ago, we planned out, uh, having a meeting next week. On, once Tuesday night about discussing the funding proposal to the American Affairs Act. Uh, we still don't have, two things, one, we still don't have a lot of input from the government. There's a session.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow. Are you gonna be able to listen in on that? I thought I had listened in afterwards.
Uh, it's at noon, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, uh, was planning to, I've got a one o'clock meeting, but can.
And I'm a little concerned and then, uh, the architect that we talked to about the original plans, they've called back, but they have not set up a time yet, kind of come take a, or to visit more about what we want to do other than what I've sent them. So from public health building, I don't know a lot of what they can do and what they're willing to do.
So you haven't heard back?
No, they, they've called back, but they haven't set up a time to discuss more. Apparently they're in the middle of several projects.
Okay.
Yeah. Here we go.
Van Gogh appraisal, what is that? That's.
That's, that's, uh, Jason.
Topper, topper. Appraisers.
Right.
That's the ones that went around door to door.
Hi, how, are you Bill?
I'm Bill.
All right, Bill, Dr. Bill, good to meet you. Okay, well, you guys get, get unpacked, we'll be ready for you whenever you're ready to go. Good, great. So, yeah, the Vanguard, I think that's just part of it, I think we had one.
He pay that, I thought that was almost out of his budget, but is that not my money, right?
Well, it is out of his budget.
It's out of his budget, but out of our money.
Yeah.
So I guess my thoughts are, do we want to have it on the agenda next Tuesday night for an update? If we don't have gathered much, or do we?
No, I don't think, there's no need to do that.
Because I'm gonna talk to the rest of the committee and see if we want to have our meeting a week or two later if we can get more. Cause we still don't have a lot of direction.
No.
There's nothing out there.
They tell you the amount, but you have no clue what you could.
Well, tomorrow, you can watch that, did you see that?
I, is that in the email that I think about?
Yes, yeah.
And they go, I need to watch that.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Do they think they're gonna know something?
Well, it's, I don't, I don't think so, Jacob. I think it's just still blowing smoke to, to vertus until they, finally the treasury releases everything.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning, how are you this morning?
Good, sir. Yeah, but it seemed like a lot of, um, a lot of discussion, but not a lot of ideas.
No, I know. Nope. No, and there's no need to come in with sort of report of.
Yeah, I'm gonna send a note out to the group and see if they want to wait another week or if they have some thoughts and they want to meet next week, then we will, so.
And I would encourage whoever's got time for any year old and watch that thing tomorrow.
I think it'll be, I think from what I read, it'll be reported, yes, and we'll be able to sit and watch it at a later time.
Is it, is there a password to that or not? Just click on?
If you got, I think you can just go right in as, I think, Jacob, but I'm not sure how, I haven't done any Nico.
I think you have to register for it, uh, believe, maybe.
Maybe something.
Let me see here.
And fellas, there is a handheld mic and you can use that as well as the podium, so whenever you're ready.
The volume system's on top on that.
Okay.
There's a, on that email, there's a.
I think you probably need to get.
Nope.
Think you need to turn it on, there's a.
Last part or all?
You can probably.
You can take it on, yeah.
I had my gold chice made in January.
It's easier to hear.
Well, we want to thank the opportunity for you gentlemen and ladies here, us, we are Goldberg, we're the guys. I said, Mr. Goldberg himself, and you just celebrated forty years of being in this business April the first.
So, very good.
So good.
I don't think about the fact that I started my practice on April.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, we're probably one of the best in the nation to doing what we're looking for. We take pride in every building, every project that we do in this type of law enforcement courthouse and jails. We are the most efficient in utilization of space over our competitors. Well, that doesn't control construction cost, but it does control its cost to you on square footage that we don't really need that space. So we really work on that when we make our projects and design our projects, what your ideas, your concepts are, it's not ours. We just want you to help people reach your goal and what you're looking for. We also have a criminologist, Mr. Joe Weber, who serves on our team, Joe's job, he comes in and he looks at everything after Mr. Goldberg's been working on it to make sure that we need all state and federal guidelines for you. So with that in mind, uh, we have people calling us around, US Marshals saying, where are you building? You know where we can get that? You're looking for that, it's a possibility that if you wind up doing a project with us, that you can hand source and get paid for doing what you're doing and have money coming in your accounting. So, uh, I don't know what, uh, you're adding or how many outsourcing that you're doing, but we are the best there is. Uh, correctional news. This is the correctional newsletter we're listed as number one in here. This is our second building in nine months of projects they got putting here. This is Saginaw, Michigan, five hundred eleven beds. Next county over was building one that is different, configuration is different. And ours is done in use. And the next door neighbor, next company is still trying to get those completed. The square footage is bigger than ours by about fifteen thousand square feet to twenty, which is the cost. And it has eleven less jails. So it's just telling you that we are one of the top in the nation in completing these projects. So we do feasibility studies if you choose. It helps us and helps you to make decisions as important as. And, uh, so that kind of gives you some history about Goldberg. All they are taking questions from you, I don't want to take up the time, I know that everybody's busy, particularly with summer coming on and with removal of masks and everything. I'm a retired farmer too, so anyway, I'll add this. So if you have questions, if we have not, I'll let Larry Goldberg talk to you some.
No, I think the one thing that, uh, you know, we're interested in is, uh, walk us through, if, if we were to hire you, what does it look step by step, what kind of costs are involved? And, uh, just a brief overview of, of how that process would work. We've never built a jail.
Okay, well, I'll let Larry do, do that part more.
Thank you so much. Uh, we are doing, uh, Woodbury County, Iowa's Justice Center up in Sioux City. And, uh, several notable things, it is a, uh, four hundred and fifty-five bed justice center, five courtrooms and, and prosecutor, judges, court services, sheriff's department and so forth. Uh, we helped them get a referendum on the ballot and get it passed as of a year ago March. And it was amazing because as we all know, that March, the whole world flip flopped. And, uh, and, uh, it took us three and a half months to get them ready for, uh, the bond issue, including preparation of websites and so forth. And, uh, and that's a whole nother, uh, issue and how your community gets its information versus how it used to. I've been doing this, as Bill said, for forty years. We have done the planning for something over three hundred justice projects nationwide. We've worked in twenty-six or twenty-seven states. Um, I remember doing the planning in Lucas County, Iowa, Pocahontas County, Iowa, now Woodbury. Uh, so it's with a good deal of pleasure that we have an opportunity to return to Iowa and talk to you. All right, let me take you through the whole, uh, thing. But I also want to tell you, uh, this will sound a little random, but I don't mean it to. In twenty fourteen, we have done the financial structure of an enormous number of our projects, working with county supervisors, commissioners, sheriff, uh, his or her command staff and so forth. Because putting one of these things together is not like an office building. It is a series of complex pieces and operations and standards and, and mores that have to fit together precisely, otherwise you don't have a project or at least a, uh, very successful. So the idea of designing a law enforcement or justice project without having a parallel development of staffing and operations never made sense to us, which is why in forty years, I've always had criminologists on my staff who have been retired jail administrators, helping us help guys like you to determine, guys like him, to determine, uh, how this thing happens. All right. In twenty fourteen, the Securities Exchange Commission, which is a part of the federal government, of course is wonderful, it's swatting mosquitoes with shotguns, uh, passed a series of rules in which you could not advise governments on matters of financial planning unless or until you became either a public underwriter, an investment advisor or municipal advisor. And this was something that we have done successfully, as I said, for years. So all of a sudden, I was hitting a brick wall. I couldn't do it without violating literally federal law. So instead, I sat later that year for my Series Fifty exams and became the first and to our knowledge, the only practicing architect who was also a municipal advisor. So what this means is that I can not only help you guys with the planning of your facility, I can help you with the structuring of its financial obligation, its budget, staffing operations, as I say, and so forth. So you all, more importantly, your community, can make informed decisions on both sides of the table, not just one side. All right. Uh, the issues, uh, in front of you are these. If we start off with step one, we're looking at, uh, available resources, financial manpower, property, uh, and so forth. All right. To give you some, uh, statistical teasers, there's a couple ways, for instance, uh, you do two point five per thousand plus twenty-five percent classification, uh, or you do three point six five per thousand. And, uh, so that would come to somewhere in the range for a population of fifteen thousand, it would be somewhere around forty-five to, to fifty beds, for example. If you took that times two hundred and sixty-five to two hundred and eighty-five square feet per bed, you'd come up with somewhere in the ten to twelve thousand square foot range. And that's presuming a law enforcement center. All right, let me go back a step. A detention center has housing and support, booking intake, medical kitchen, laundry, visitation, you with me? If you add a sheriff's office, it becomes a law enforcement center. Okay? And that may or may not include sheriff's office, evidence suite, nine one one, and invariably some training, uh, space that can also double as an EOC, Urgency Operations Center. If you do that, you start qualified for CMA funding, which is your state emergency management, state outgrowth fee. All right. If you add courts, court services and prosecutor, then you become a justice center. Now, I won't take a lot of time discussing, uh, uh, these avenues other than to say the advantage to a justice center, of course, is that you no longer transport prisoners across town or across the block or across the square, or whatever you may have in mind. And/or you may have a courthouse where the court space can be, uh, used for other purposes because you're too, uh, crowded. That doesn't seem to be the case here. So, uh, Bill tells me that, uh, that a justice center may not be, uh, in the works, so we'll stick to a law enforcement center. All right. Costs, you have two sides to, to this call. Construction costs are horrible. They're horrible. I'm not gonna kid you. Copper is going up at somewhere like three to five percent per day. Serious. We're struggling everywhere we're building or bidding or coming out of the ground. The demand for skilled labor is awful. The demand for materials is just as bad. Okay? I remember thirty years ago, we bid Cherokee County, Kansas's hundred-bed facility and it was, it was the first time we busted two hundred bucks a foot and I thought we were all gonna die. I thought my practice was gonna go down the toilet. I said, communities can't afford this crap, we've got to do something else. And now we're looking at five hundred and fifty to six hundred dollars a foot.
Is that, is that using architectural fees in that?
That includes everything.
It does.
And I'll, I'll get to that in a minute because I want you to understand the breakdown, at least how we do. Now, the flip side of the coin are terms and rates for borrowing money. Okay? For example, when we started out in Woodbury County, I thought we would do tax exempt for about three six five, three six eight five, something like that. Okay? But we knew that the feds were gonna approach because, uh, ICE is in terrible shape. Uh, so are the, uh, US Marshals. And incidentally, we work with them directly out of Washington. Uh, we know, for instance, that ICE, the North Central Division, which includes North and South Dakota, Nebraska, Iowa and Wisconsin, literally has inherited ninety-two thousand bodies from the border. Of those talking directly with them, I asked Lenny Marshon, I said, how many are level two and above? Level one being no, no more guilty than being in the wrong country at all. Level two starts to be crimes against property and then crimes against persons, okay? And they told me forty-five thousand. Forty-five thousand, okay? I mean, literally, if we gave each county a hundred prisoners, you wouldn't have enough facilities. facilities. And it's nowhere near stopping, as you all know, watching the news. All right. Anyhow, we budget eighty percent of your project dollars for construction, for hard We budget twenty percent for A&E fees, testing, FFNE, which is fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, and contingencies. There's no point in my designing you a jail and having this stand in front of you when it's done and say, "Well, I don't care what Goldberg did, I need another three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to get the thing furnished." And I'm not talking about some luxury deal. I'm talking about workstations, I'm talking about mattresses, outfits, smoke masks, fire extinguishers, miscellaneous kitchen equipment, cookery, you know, all the stuff that makes a twenty-four-seven operation work. Okay? So what we've developed over the years are schedules for these things, work charts that we set out with these guys and literally go through every single item they have that can be reused and adapted for the new facility versus it's got to be purchased new, or just you need a dish. You can't go from an eighteen-bed jail to a fifty-bed jail without additional mattresses and outfits and so forth. Anyhow, so when I tell you that we charge seven and a half percent, it includes the following items, and we are unique in this regard. It includes all your architecture and engineering. It includes your interior design. It includes your FFNE audit and so forth. And I don't care, gentlemen, if they bid, if we bid, or we divvy it up because they like who they buy mattresses from, so they just assume, keep doing that, we give them the specs, and they do that. Or they say, "We don't have a source, how about you?" And then we'll bid. It does not matter to us. All right? It also includes my criminological services, which is needs assessment. Now, let's talk about needs assessment. It used to be that jails had male and female, sentence, non-sentence, and you could get away with four pods. Okay? Do I have to tell you that that time is long past gone? He's going to be dealing with twenty-eight to thirty-four distinct populations, whether it's gang members, whether it's sexual orientation, whether it's medical, whether it's mental health. Okay? Anyone that says that mental health or cognitive assessment isn't part of the booking and intake process hasn't been away in the last three years because we know it was. I was doing eight jails down in Oklahoma, and we were part of the first truth in sentencing study that identified four out of ten local inmates in Oklahoma jails had some cognitive deficit severe enough that it adversely affected their judgment, their emotional being, or their reason. All right? And that was twenty years ago. Today, we now know the problem is as bad as ours. National Institute of Corrections publishes figures that regularly support fifteen to twenty percent of your male inmates have some cognitive deficit ranging from dyslexia to schizophrenia to other psychosis. Twenty-five to thirty percent of your females do. Now, you're going to deal with this one way or the other. Okay. Which is why, incidentally, I bring medical and booking and intake together in one complex off the vehicle cell. For that reason. Does this make sense? Okay. All right. So before we get to general population, they have gone through at least some sort of baseline cognitive assessment so that you can understand, are you dealing with a drunk, a drug addict, anger management, dyslexia, psychotic behavior, what it is so that you've got a fighting chance to understand who that guy is that just got brought into your institution? And we'll have some special needs beds, a padded cell, and so forth. All right? Incidentally, you know what a padded cell is? There's one manufacturer left in this country. Marathon Gold Medal endorsed by the American Psychiatric Association, and I won't use padded if it's not. And you know what they charge for a padded cell? Whatever they want. Actually, it's about thirty-five thousand.
Is it a pre-made? Is it a pre-made cell?
No. No, in fact, interestingly, padded cells have to be within a one-hour random exposure. So we'll still put them in a masonry cell. Speaking of which, we do rear chase modular steel cells. They are the most up-to-date inventive advanced housing yet, and I'm going to tell you flat out, each of them comes with a shower. Now, this is not luxury. This is not intended for luxury. What it is intended for is that day rooms get smaller. I haven't done a gang shower in twenty years. I won't do it. They're targets for abuse and assault, and not to mention the passage of pathogenic conditions of one kind or another, whether it's lice or just lots and lots of things. It also means that these guys then have the option for sequential sanctioning, or the first line of disciplinary or administrative seg is for that prisoner in his or her own home cell. You with me? Before you have to remove them to a cell down the hall or somewhere else. Okay? They're also cheaper than masonry, and because they come prefabricated, they're fully furnished, fully coated. They, we worked with Sherwin-Williams, we're in the forefront of this, and helped develop polyurethane compared to powder coating and marine epoxy, six forty-five. It's far superior. It's like your truck bed liner. It's almost impossible to do fifty. Okay? But it also means, IBC International Building Code, now, I'm not trying to get into the weeds, but it's stuff that you guys need to know. Twenty fifteen, we were doing an eight-hundred-bed facility in Pascagoula, Mississippi, when they came out and published the first time that you guys cannot evacuate a jail in the event of an oncoming storm. It's just not going to happen. Your emergency personnel's too busy taking care of your law-abiding citizens. Okay? But you can't let them be vulnerable and unprotected either. So we did the structural engineering research that showed with added escutcheon plates, welded plates, we could turn steel cells into horizontal boxgirders. Now, you don't have hurricanes up here. What do you have?
Hurricane.
Of course. Same difference. Okay? Now, the truth is, it's the same thing with earthquake, with seismic codes. I don't care if the top of your building's moving or the bottom of your building's moving. They're moving in opposite directions in the event of lateral forces or shear forces being applied. So it doesn't matter if I'm in southeast Missouri, near the New Madger Fault, or up here, or in Oklahoma, the ability to withstand a hundred and thirty-five mile-an-hour sustained winds or three-second bursts at a hundred and seventy-five miles an hour, these cells meet this criteria. They're the only way that you can with housing in jail. So understand that those are some... Now, we are doing a new justice center in Lynn County, Kansas. The reason I bring this up is because we had to rebid the project four times to get an electrical bid. Four times. The first three times, we almost got no bids at all. And I'm talking about Decker Electric, SAG, just firms that have followed us and worked with us off and on through the Midwest, nothing. The union halls are empty. I don't know where this country's going in terms of construction, and you're young enough, you'll be around, I probably won't, but I don't know what we're going to do. Other than this, and that is take some of the systems that used to be on-site and create the factory application for their pre-assembling, and create modular mechanical electrical plumbing systems that get dropped into place on the cells and in the day rooms in a modular fashion. You with me? Hospitals started doing this five or ten years ago, incidentally. We're now doing it. They're called mod backs.
What does one of those cells, the standard cell, as correctly costs, one of steel cells?
About thirteen to sixteen thousand dollars.
And then you have to plumbing the hook there and up, basically.
Yeah.
And if it's under a roof, it's, it's sort of...
So if you do, for example, if you have a site that doesn't have some sort of historical context, next door to this beautiful courthouse of yours, okay? Then you can do an insulated, pre-engineered building, and I'll throw up some brick or stone around the entrance, and you're saving money. Now, we did it in Cloud County, Kansas, Bourbon County, Kansas. We can show the pictures of it.
So you built a simple steel structure that put these pre-made cells in?
Exactly. And I love, it does not have to look ugly. Now, it frankly can look kind of cool and I guess, and I think your law enforcement center should be a handsome neighbor. It doesn't need to be the most gorgeous, award-winning building in the country. In fact, it kind of shouldn't be.
A steel building would be way, way more reasonable than a concrete structure.
Oh, absolutely, it would be. And then, but the point is that the rear chase nature of a supervisor, I have a five-foot chase behind the cell so that your maintenance people can get in there, they never have to go into the pod. You with me? Ninety-nine percent of their maintenance takes place outside the security envelope. Now, what it also means is that they're entitled to three square feet of natural light by ACA standards, by Iowa jail standards. They are not entitled to a view. The feds have ruled long ago that that means they're entitled to determine a change in the time of day, a change in the weather, or both. You with me? They're not entitled to look out in the parking lot and see your license plate. And if you don't think this happens, I'm under emergency contract with the city of St. Louis, trying to figure out how to get ahead of the rioting occurring in their downtown justice center. New Year's weekend, the fourth floor rioted and got burned out. The prisoners have now told their counterparts on the fourth floor how to do it, and on the first floor how to do it, and the building's been ruined. So if you don't think that these guys could figure out how to rack and ean home, they can. So as a consequence, the more of this stuff that can take place outside the security envelope, the better off you are.
Do you use skylights, or how do you get light in there? What's the way you get light into the day, through high windows?
The day rooms are entitled to twelve square feet of natural light that we do through skylights, and plus two square feet for every bed that doesn't have its own window. But what we do is we supply windows at angles so that prisoners looking out can see the tops of trees, the sky, what have you, they cannot necessarily see people, license plates, and so forth. And we do that pretty careful. All right? Now, there are those who suggest that the prisoners don't need their own windows at all. The problem is there's something called a joint consent decree, which means that cruel and unusual punishment in incarceration, the ACLU's involved. I don't agree. So we will provide windows, but again, they'll either be frosted or slightly scumbled. There's also something called Pre Prison Rape Elimination Act of 2012. And what that holds is that the feds pass this. The idea is to reduce the likelihood of facility sexual assault inside the institution by ratcheting down or reducing the opportunities for violations and personal privacy, meaning from here to here. So we have developed pre-compliant doors and other things to help protect you from that. Watch doors is exempt, medical is exempt, but otherwise, it's impatent and enforceable. So there's all these things that come together to discipline how this thing gets lit out. We tackle all of this early on, working with you and your sheriff and his or her commands.
So take us through the pricing structure, and then, just for reference, in Woodbury County, you said three and a half, it took you three and a half months to get to a bond. I assume that was after you had done a bunch more work. So kind of sequentially take us through the study period, the public information period, the bonding process, and the construction process. Give us kind of the estimated time table and cost.
All right, we'll do. Depending on the availability of data, okay, and I say this with respect and forbearance because there are jurisdictions that literally cannot give me three years of data. I need that. Everything starts with housing or daily population data from the last three years. But more than that, it's not just the number of bodies, it's the types of bodies. Males, females, whack jobs, seventeen-year-olds, druggies, it doesn't matter. I need as much of that information, however anecdotal some of it may be, so that we're not just doing a needs assessment, but we're doing a custody analysis. You with me? So I can say, "We need eight beds in this pod, twelve beds in this pod, four beds in this pod, sixteen beds in this pod, and so forth." Okay? Otherwise, I'm just guessing. Okay. The second part, and that's upfront, okay? The second part, and that's upfront, okay? I need the budgets for the jail. I don't need the budgets for forensics, or road patrol, or any of that stuff, but I need the budgets for the jail. I need staffing, I don't need to know whose name is what, things like that. Jail administrator, shift supervisors, correctional officers, an armory, an evidence guy, a transport officer, I don't care if it pertains to that jail and you guys are appropriating money at their request, I need to know what that is. And it's amazing to me how many jurisdictions have some of the screwiest accounting you have ever seen. For instance, take Lynn County. I'm not telling a tale out of school, but it's like, well, these jailers were hired, their benefits are paid out of this fund. It's like, why aren't their benefits paid out of the same fund the rest of... Well, because at that time, we didn't blah, 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 and so forth. So you're trying to pull information, and it's amazing how wrong you can be if you don't understand what you're doing. So this would be stuff that we would sit with you all, or the treasurer, the auditor, whoever, and his people, and work through this budget. Because if you're building a new jail, you're gonna have new staff, I'm telling you, you're gonna have new staff anyway, because the biggest turnover in law enforcement occurs during the six months after your new jail opens. You cannot teach some old dogs new tricks. Okay. The second part of that is where's it going? Now, it doesn't matter where you all want it to go, it matters where your community will allow it to go. And I mean this again with the utmost respect, but we have been engaged for feasibility studies and wound up with twenty, twenty-five, thirty sites that we've analyzed and laid in front of the public. And this one is too close to a military cemetery, this one's too close to a school, this one's too close to my mom's nursing home, this one's too close, and so forth. So if you have a site that in the middle of a commercial area or industrial area, or out by the airport, we will look and do a comparative analysis of that site relative to access, topography, utilities, which are huge, and so forth. And between the courthouse and the law enforcement center, do emergency vehicles have to run through residential neighborhoods, for example, because you'd prefer that didn't have to If you have a site adjacent to the existing jail, sometimes those are good sites because the public used to have in the jail. But I'm not gonna design you a facility that cannot expand.
Okay, so we've got the study, the location, then what's next? And could your attention cost, as much of those?
The third is I'm putting the schematic design together. That includes site plan, floor plans, staffing plans, exterior rendering or two, you know the kinds of stuff, so the public can see what's going here. Finally, I'm putting the numbers together. And I do it using four charts. Charts A through D is what I call them. And if you called your guys at Edward Jones, they're on the square, and you talked to Edward Jones in St. Louis and said, "I'm holding charts A through D," they would tell you that you're working with Lawrence Goldberg. Nobody had ever developed connection between Justice Projects and Wall Street, and we did. So chart A is your hard and soft goals. That comes down to the bottom of the amount that you would pay a year if you financed the project for twenty years, ten years, thirty years. You know, I never finished my thought with Woodbury. I wanna go back to, we ended up financing Woodbury in two bondage. The first was taxable, and the second was tax exempt. And the reason we did that is because there's something called the IRS 10% rule, which holds that if 10% of your bed capacity, or 10% of your square footage, or whichever's lease is dedicated to holding federal prisoners for revenue, then the tax exempt nature of your transaction is voided, and you have what's called a recapture profit. Okay? So because we knew that Sioux City was gonna hold ICE and Marshall prisoners, we did half of the bonds as a taxable event. The interesting thing is when we pulled the trigger and went to close it, we had a rate of 2.685, almost a full point less than the tax exempt bonds we had anticipated doing a year earlier. Okay? So what I'm trying to tell you is anybody in the stock market understands this, and a whole bunch of us are that weren't entered fifteen years ago, that the rates could not be better. Okay? And I'm not saying you wanna borrow money, but if you have to, now's about as good a time as we've seen for your last thirty years. We're looking at the possibility of then doing the back half of Woodbury, which would be tax exempt, and it may actually fall either in the low twos or upper ones. Can you imagine borrowing money for 1.875%?
Pretty awesome.
All right. That was the thought that I failed to finish a little while ago. Okay. Chart B is your staffing and operations. So those are your two uses of funds, your annual payment and your staffing and operations. Okay? I normally will ask a county board, whatever you appropriate for your existing jail, at the very least, keep on doing that. That's your equity position, if you will, in the project. Okay. Your third chart, chart C, is your revenues. Now, your revenues may end up in housing revenues if you have a new jail and around you are older jails or smaller jails. They may need to send their bat boys to you, they may send their gals to you, whatever it will be. We have a huge track record of beds never going empty in jails I've designed. They just don't. You also have commissary revenue, you've got telephone revenue, you've got just license revenues, you've got just all kinds of stuff, small, medium, and large, and we'll track all that with you and extrapolate it so that you've got a reasonable sense of what that would be. Normally, I do stuff on an 85% slippage rate. For example, if I suggest a hundred-bed jail, it really means I'm giving him 85 beds. If you need a hundred beds, then I would build a hundred-and-twenty-bed jail. Okay, why? Why is there this slippage rate? Sure, because on Wednesday night, you've got a ten-bed pot for women, six of those beds are filled, you've got four empty beds. It doesn't matter how badly you need those beds for guys or something else, you can't stick them in those four beds. So as a consequence, we normally plan for an 85% custody slippage.
Well, Larry, I don't mean to cut this short, but if we could get to some numbers in our group, I know you're going to, you're heading north, and Larry's going by, or Bill's going back down to St. Joe, as I understand it. If we could get some sense of what your numbers are, I would appreciate that. We've got a meeting that we thought was tomorrow, it's actually today on this stimulus.
Okay. All right. Oh, so there's just so much information.
I know, I understand.
Okay, so that portion, which is the study portion, we normally charge about eight to twelve thousand dollars.
Okay. And as I recall, if we hire you further, then you credit our account by that?
Correct. Well, not by the whole thing.
Okay.
But we normally do, on let's say a twelve thousand dollar study, we'll normally credit it about five thousand.
Okay.
Because I don't want you to pay for the design portion costs.
So then, when we get to your schematic design and all your proprietary chart system that helps us build a jail that we'll be proud of, what kind of fees, architectural fees or the design fees?
Well, the whole thing would be about seven and a half percent.
Seven and a half percent?
Yeah. Now, that includes the five thousand dollar credit, for instance, on the feasibility side.
Okay. And you went through that, not I?
Yes, it includes all your engineering. It also includes your procedures and policy training and preparation of your procedures and policy manual, your staffing and operational audits, and your post-occupancy audits. Okay? And the reason is because as skilled as these guys are, it's a bunch of new technology, a bunch of new procedures, there's no point kidding ourselves. He's also gonna have, as I said, a lot of turnover. So Joe Weber and I are available, it's like I've told sheriffs over the years, I don't care if you write a procedures and policy manual and we edit it, or we write it and you edit it, it's gotta be done. It can't be copied from someone else's jail, and this is all included in our seven and a half percent fee. So is FF and E. Okay? So there's some twists to that, and I know we're not the cheapest architect around, and I don't care. It's what's needed for a turnkey approach to your facility, and I can't offer our clients anything less.
Appreciate that.
On a steel structure with the pods, just per square foot, roughly, how much less is that than a concrete structure?
Oh, gosh.
Is it half?
Concrete masonry, per bed will be about twenty-two to twenty-four thousand.
Per bed?
And you can't do a shower in every cell, you would be back in gang showers, it's a mess. All right. Especially with COVID, or lice, or hepatitis, or all kinds of stuff. Okay. Now, it breaks down roughly this way. You've got about 25 to 30% of our fee for all the design and so forth, you've got about 40% for technical working drawings. You've got about 5% for the bidding process. And understand, in Iowa, you must bid public procurement a certain way. Okay? It doesn't matter, it is what it is, and basically, you're gonna have to bid it to general contractors. And I noticed a builder on the drive up 71, I have no idea if he or she would be... The other thing, incidentally, we could exploit Edward Jones for the bonds, your banks for what we call bond anticipation note prior to closing. There's all kinds of things that I would love to talk to you about having your local businesses involved in. There's no reason why they can't be. Okay? If you're looking, especially at somewhere around a five and a half to six and a half million dollar package. Okay. Now, getting you ready to bid will take about six months. On the basis that we get some good bids and we're not rebidding major parts of the project as nobody showed up, then what you'll do, you'll evaluate the bids over two or three weeks, we'll make our recommendations to you, and hopefully you'll feel comfortable pulling the trigger. When that happens, it will take you about 12 months to build the project, depending on weather. Okay? But I have to tell you, it's a little wild. We were doing Dickinson County, Kansas, right now, and the first thing that happened is the concrete contractor didn't show up. They walked, literally walked. We lost four weeks from there. Later on, the painter walked. We had two painters walk. I mean, it's like, I've never had this kind of stuff happen before, but it's happening now. So you wanna really make sure and vet your bidders to the greatest degree that Iowa bid statutes will allow you to do so. They won't prior to bid, but they will after the bid.
Right.
And so it becomes crucial. So that gives you some kind of timeframe.
Sure.
So you've got about three and a half months for your study. Okay? And I'll overlap that with your referendum.
Okay.
Okay, for two reasons. One is I don't wanna lose six or seven months, excuse me, but the other thing is I want your community to understand they're part of the process. This isn't you and I just show up with our pearls of wisdom and take it away. And we'll help you organize a jail planning group or advisory group of twenty or thirty people, and they will work wonders. I'm a huge believer, and when people understand the problem, they will help you come up with the right answer.
Sure, absolutely.
When we did Lynn County, we had about thirty people on the planning committee, and they literally said, "We don't want a half-cent sales tax, we want a full cent, and we wanna do a justice center, and we wanna do it right." And that son of a gun passed by 81%, second highest in my career.
Great.
So any questions? I've covered a huge amount of territory.
Yeah, appreciate your thoroughness, Larry, and certainly you've got a lot of history, a lot of expertise in the business, and you're talking to three guys who've never built much of anything half that size. So we're gonna need a lot of help, whoever we hire, and we're gonna have to have a lot of handholding, I think, because not only do we have the challenges of our property tax will be increasing next year because of reassessments on residential properties, we have the uncertainty of these building materials, I know that's offset by low bond rates. And then the reality is, we have, you know, a sheriff that'll be leaving in three and a half years. So how do you engage the community beyond that to get a vision that serves, you know, serves your community for the next forty or fifty years, whatever this building is?
Well, I'll tell you this, and I know there is some discussion about mental health, but in my opinion, if you can give your community a chance to believe in law enforcement as something other than a revolving door, okay? I'll leave you with this thought. Take a plate and divide it in half. Fifty percent of that plate represents your habitual offenders. They just don't look out a window and see what you or I see. They can't play by the rules, they are what they are. They, they, they are what they are. It's the other fifty percent that's interesting. Because of that fifty percent, twenty percent will commit one offense, they'll learn their lesson, they'll walk out the front door and they'll never come back. That thirty percent remaining is what we call our targeted population. And they can swing either way. You can give them the support they need to never come back, or they can come back and become a habitual offender. Okay? And if you explain it this way and back it up with the design of the facility and the programs, okay? Then your public can say, you're doing something to get at the problem. You're just not warehousing human beings because you'll never get ahead of that curve. It's like pouring water on a day.
Excellent.
So for what that's worth.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
I stopped to leave with you.
Okay, will do your zipper.
I'd like to say one more thing. You're welcome, and I'll get out of your way, thank you for your time. One of the important things again that I wanna bring up is our designs are the most efficient use in space. It's means reduced cost, you, and that janitor over there and most people to work. The other important thing in our science, crime science. You don't know what that is, cars will be most efficient crime science. What that means, you can have a jail going down the hallway with an inmate and everybody doesn't see them. A lot of the others, because you wanna be more aesthetic, a lot of turns, corners. Every turn in the corner is more expensive to view. Every turn in the corner makes it more dangerous for those that work in that jail. So, and then, uh, I'd like to have, thank you. On behalf of Goldwater Group of Art, Larry and myself, a lot of us come up here. You have our cards. You're welcome to call me at any time. Thanks for having a trip up here with your people. And if you choose us, we will help you design anything you need to put together to make to your public. And we will come up here to help you with any public presentation. If you do your project and the ends, at the end of one year, you can come back and go through your facility again, which is included in the cost. Make sure that everybody's hands are still up and going correctly. If you think that's in between again, we'll take care of that. And we just take that much pride in what we do. So thanks, Larry.
Well, thank you very much. Sir, oh, thank you for, yeah, appreciate, uh, didn't, I didn't realize that, uh, we thought our, uh, you know, we've got these stimulus dollars and NACO has a webinar and we all thought it was tomorrow. So it's today. And so we've gotta get, uh, get going for that. But awesome, we really appreciate it. And, uh, we will, I'm sure we'll, we'll think of a question or two after you go, but, uh, we've got your numbers. Thank you for your time today, appreciate it. Thank you. I know. Thanks. Thank you much. All right, gentlemen, we had a chance to look at the claims. Do I have a motion to approve the claim that's presented?
I make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the minutes from March thirtieth. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's approved. Okay, and a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I'm just gonna say, when you go onto that, last, they just sent out another email for registration. Click on it and you type in your email address if you'd registered with them and it'll take you right to that and it'll send you all the information. Takes, I did it just a little bit ago, so it's very simple.
Is it recorded, Ben White, Washington?
Uh, it doesn't say that on here, but I'm hoping it is. I'm gonna miss a little bit of it.
Sure.
But I'll get it.